Adoption of agenda for regular meeting. Under provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the time, date, place, and typically the agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, December the 8th, 2014, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florissant, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Do you have a motion?
I agree about the agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Flores.
Reeder.
Aye.
Reeder.
Aye.
Dr. German.
Aye.
Secretary Wozniak.
Aye.
Aye. Adoption of agenda for closed meeting. Section 610.021 of Missouri law provides for discussion of certain agenda items in a closed meeting. Notice of proposed closed meeting, including the agenda item to be discussed, was posted. The Board, by roll call vote, must authorize holding the closed meeting and approve the proposed agenda by recourse to each subject to be discussed. The agenda for the meeting is legal, section 610.021.1, and personnel, section 610.021.3.
I agree about the agenda for the closed meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Flores.
Reeder.
Aye.
Reeder.
Aye.
Dr. German.
Aye.
Secretary Wozniak.
Aye.
Secretary Hogg.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming tonight. I want to remind everybody that the public comments cards are located on the back table. So if you wish to, and Mr. Flores, we ask that you complete that card and turn it in, so that way we can also follow up with you regarding your concerns, even if you do not wish to speak before us. I'm also kind of under the weather. Mr. Brown told me today, and he's really under the weather, he said he wasn't coming in. I'm slowly losing my voice, so what I'll probably do is have Mrs. Hogg head who loves speaking tonight in order to save my voice. So, I do first want to start off, I know over the last hundred-plus days, this has been a very troubling time for our district and our community. There really aren't any words to adequately explain the emotions that are happening. I just want to assure you that the safety and well-being of our students have always been or continue to be the top priority of this district. I know there's a lot of voices that want to be heard, and I applaud our administration and our teachers to incorporate what's happening in our community into the curriculum, into classroom discussions. My daughter had long conversations in their Spanish class, which it could be on social studies, but the Spanish teacher found the time and a place to talk about it. And it was, she felt it was worthwhile, and my daughter and I had a good conversation about it. So, you know, we're continuing to be working with our families, with our students, with our community. You know, for me, if you really want your voice to be heard, you know, I implore you to volunteer, to reach out, to tutor, to go to your PTG, PTSDO meetings, to join your neighborhood organizations, you know, become part of your community, and, you know, that's probably the greatest way that you'll be able to have your voice heard. But again, I applaud our staff for all the efforts they've been making. Communication is vital, and a lot of times decisions are made on the whim when occurrences happen, and they try to do, make the best decisions possible at that time. One thing that we did do, we put it out on our Facebook page, we put it on the website, we sent it home, we did school reach calls, but also on the table out there is questions and answers regards to the response that the district took on the lockout that occurred last week. So if you have not read those, or had opportunity to do that, they're on the back table. So at this time, I'll sit down to Mr. -- oh, I'm sorry, we have recognition, thank you.
Missouri Environmental Education Association has outstanding service awarded to Nancy Chanel. On November 8th, the Missouri Environmental Education Association presented Mrs. Nancy Chanel its 2014 Outstanding Service Award in recognition of her efforts to promote and provide environmental education leadership. A teacher for more than forty years at Ferguson-Florissant School District, Miss Chanel is now retired but still teaches at Little Creek Nature Area. In her spare time, she founded Geese Peace, an organization devoted to reducing the geese population through humane methods, and she also donated her time at the Wildlife Rescue Center in West Anglos County, taking many hurt birds from lakes in Florissant to get the medical care they need. In addition, Mrs. Chanel has led a lake project at Ferguson Middle School for many years, teaching students how to care for the banking system.
I'd just like to say, it's been quite a privilege to work in Ferguson-Florissant School District and see all the ones and students over here. Thanks very much for this recognition. Thank you.
You're not welcome. A special moment, as was described, but Nancy was one of the first people I met when I started teaching at Ferguson Middle School. It's been a while, but let me ask for a better person to help instruct, lead our students in so many different ways in the area of science and just character. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
activities and events of the district that may be of special interest to Board members and to the board. Mr. Reeder.
Well, thank God, I don't see a wake for you tonight. I'm not sick tonight, but I'm kind of gray, because nobody brown's not here. Usually I'm brown. I did, so that was kind of corny, too. Anyway, I'd like to say about the protest, I applaud all the teachers and staff, everybody who, whatever, helped out with what happened. You know, you can have every plan and place, you can think about all the different scenarios, but I, you know, when you were a principal, I can't imagine, you know, and no matter what, you know, if you think, well, we should have done this, or we should have done that, or this, and, I think about, what if I were the person? You know, so I'm, whether I'm a teacher, or, you know, and I've got twenty kids running out of my classroom, or I'm a principal, or, you know, I'll tell you, so I really applaud how the district handled this and brought us together for a separate meeting with all kinds of community members, and law enforcement, and everything else. So, I just had to say that, you know, I'm really proud of our district and how it went down, also proud that nobody got hurt, and that's the main thing, everybody was taken care of. I definitely, even though the sheets are explaining a lot of, a lot of questions and things, I do want, I'm sure this is on the sheet, I get calls all the time about the buses that we, we sent out, but in our meeting, Chief Lowry of Florissant said that he had requested those buses. And of course, you know, I don't know how everybody else feels, but any time law enforcement would request anything from us, even at another time, even if it wasn't anything to do with us, I see it as part of, any part of the community, so I was, I was really glad that you guys went ahead and went with that, you know. But anyway, I won't ramble more about that. I, on a good note, I got to go to Cross Keys and see the choir. That was awesome, a lot of parents. You know, it's just, just amazing, I'm seven into that middle school age now, you know, so it was a great event. And on my strategic plan, I'm, I'm with Laura Madrusik, our CFO, trying to deal with finances of the district, because it seems like all the great ideas everybody has always comes back to the money. So, we're running, I'm going to mention it until you're tired of hearing it, we're in April, we're doing a no-tax increase bond issue for twenty-five million dollars. That, I really encourage, you know, that has to pass for our district, our kids, everybody, our teachers, everybody, so spread the word. So I have some notes here, I guess it's better if I just read this. This month, I attended the Financial Task Force Committee meeting, where we provided an update on revenue, an update on the copier bid to provide additional savings to the district, an update from the Berkeley Economic Development Board, and a discussion of future bond projects and needs. I'm happy to report that the Ferguson-Florissant Foundation for Education has received seven thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars from various donors to establish a new scholarship for students who plan on pursuing a nursing degree. That was awesome. The district has received funding from the Healthy Eating with Low-Gold Produce Grant through St. Louis University. The district is in the final stages of planning with our, with our collaboration of district FACS teacher, MACH teachers, Airmark staff, and St. Louis University Nutrition and Dietetics Department. Say that three times fast. McClellan Art and McClellan South Berkeley have become onsite food production centers, and our district is hiring six of our high school students to transform locally grown tomatoes and sweet potatoes into marinara sauce and sweet potato, potato coins. These products will be served to our students in their lunches. The grant has purchased the equipment needed for this production. The grant will pay for these students to work twelve hours a week for eight weeks, and then they will be paid ten dollars an hour. The goal is to provide our students with a viable location in the food service area and will also increase locally grown produce in our school lunch program. Airmark will take it, take the opportunity from this program to incorporate nutritious, nutrition education to our students to promote healthy eating. Outside shops will visit our schools' cafeterias to promote the product, and an education program will be developed to send information to parents to promote healthy eating at home. This month, the district will be paying for transitional reinsurance contribution, which is a new mandate of the Affordable Healthcare Act. This is sixty-three dollars per person, including spouses and children, and also self-insured insurance plans must pay this. The government, we use this fee to help fund the exchanges. This year, the mandate for our district is one hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred fourteen dollars. This fee will be taken out of our healthcare insurance propriety fund. That was a learning, I did not know that, again, a lot of people know I work for AT&amp;T, we're also self-insured, I did not know that there was a fee to self-insured organizations. So ours is one hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred fourteen dollars. Because of the additional costs associated with the Affordable Healthcare Act, the district is looking at ways to decrease costs of healthcare. Laura Madrusik, our CFO, will be sharing information during this meeting about one of the initiatives to decrease employee healthcare costs. The district is kicking off an Employee Wellness Committee in February, which will promote healthy lifestyle changes to employees throughout our district. Okay, and the consent agenda contains a renewal of music liability workman's compensation insurance. The total cost for the year is one million seven hundred seventy-five thousand six hundred forty-five dollars, which includes a ten percent membership credit. Music provides coverage to the school district and universities throughout the state of Missouri and provides training and support to all districts in order to continue to provide cost savings through processes. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Reeder.
As usual, just every month, Kevin Vogel and I hang out at PDC, Professional Development. That's an ongoing process with our staff, there's a lot of time and effort put into improving the skills of our staff. Our green committee met again this, this month. But I got to spend a little more time with Kevin, because both of us attended the Missouri Council Teachers of Mathematics Conference, I had no call for the district. As a retired teacher, I happen to hang out with math people, my wife thinks I'm crazy to go do math for a weekend, but it's, you know, it can't be helped. Little things, I know that in McClellan Art, there was a couple teachers trying to flip classrooms. That was a very interesting session, where the teacher prepares or finds videos online that the students look at the instruction at home, and when they come to school, they work on the homework and collaborate, work together, and get individual help from the teacher. It's pretty much like what happens in an English class, where your assignment is to read the essay at home, and then when you come to school, you dig into the essay, you question, you discuss, and it's a little bit more along that line. Nowadays, with the video technology capabilities, with things like Khan Academy, Khan Academy, it's Sal Khan, and they're mixed up, he's made some very, very good videos that are available to anybody, they're definitely worth looking at, and I've been pressing that for a long time. I was fortunate enough to be able to meet him once at the National School Board's meeting, really an amazing situation that he's going on there. As far as assessment and standards and student achievement goes, just a couple of things I highlight that Dr. Diggs and her group are working on. I know everyone thinks we're talking about raising achievement, we're thinking only of the low-achieving students, and the only is what's not correct there. Obviously, we're trying to get extra help for our lowest-achieving students, but we tested sixty-four students recently to see if they were qualified for our gifted program, and we ended up with sixteen of those students qualified for PRO, our gifted program in the district. And so, I'm hoping that you recognize that everyone in the whole spectrum is really benefiting from our efforts to improve achievement. And, and close to my heart, of course, is math and science. Dr. Diggs has been working with, she's already visited six elementary schools, working on improving math instruction in grades eight through six, and we've got some high-science kits that are being implemented at the, at the schools, that will do a lot of focus on pre- and post-testing, so we get a much better picture of where the students are. And then the last comment about the math conference I attended was that we had a very important session on the new test that's coming down. The state test is going to be different this year. Fortunately, Kevin knew all about it, and it was very good, but in reality, people, parents, and students, everyone needs to understand that in the next few years, there's going to be multiple changes in the state test. This is going to be new this spring, and probably in two years, it'll be different again. And so, it's something that our teachers have to deal with, is keep changing our approach so we can make sure our students are well-prepared for these tests. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Yes. I have had the opportunity this month to work with our PBIS team. I am one of the Student Expectations Committee, and as I've gone to these meetings, each time, I see how important it is for, to have the opportunity to have teachers come together and to talk about how to make our schools better by having great school climates. What's important also is I see that the teachers are sharing with each other, the things that they're doing at the various schools, and when they have success, they're sharing their ideas, and they're talking about things that have worked really very well for them in the schools. The other part that's really great is to see them talk about various situations, and they role-play, and they talk about ways to, to get through certain problems in their schools, to help with behavior, to raise test scores, to have students feel safe at school, all of these things to help make our schools better. So I applaud, I, I work with Dr. Lann, and I want to say thank you to her and the Tilt Team, and all the work that they're doing to make sure that we have quality education in our schools. Also, I had an opportunity to visit two schools this month. I visited Holman Elementary School, and I also visited Airport. And it was so delightful to walk into schools and see instruction going on. Not only instruction going on, but students engaged, to walk in and to see clean buildings, to walk in and see people addressing students in respectful ways, and students doing the same. So it's really, it feels good to walk into those schools and get a homie feeling, and to know that you're welcome, welcome into each one of the buildings, and to also know that every teacher in there that I've taken contact with, I, I felt that they really cared about what was going on in the building and what was going on with students, the way they addressed the students, the way they addressed me as a visitor in the building. I want to say thank you for, oh, I didn't see, one of the homie principals here. I never had that building, you know, that kind of building, that's always happened in my buildings. But I, I do want to say thank you for the work that they are doing. What's important also is to walk through the buildings and see the PBIS, the information up on boards, to look at the data, and to see the attendance rates, because I think it's important, I know it's important, for students to be able to see where their numbers are. And it's important to them, and you can tell, you can tell that they're excited about that. Their achievement levels are up on the boards, and you can walk in and actually see what's going on with achievement, with, with behavior, and with attendance. Very, very important. Also, I know that this is a very difficult time for our, for our district, and I also know that there's no right answer for everything, and we're not going to please everyone, but I do want to say this to our, our staff, I want to say thank you for thinking about what was best for students, and doing what you thought was best for students at the time. That's the best that we can do as humans, we can only do what we think is best at the time and do what we think is best for students. There's a lot going on, it's not just about Wilson versus Brown, there's a lot of things going on in our district, and there are a lot of, this is a lot to absorb, but what I do want to say is, our team, we're dedicated to making this the best and doing the best that we can do for all students, and not just for our students, but our entire community. So be patient with us, think about the fact that you never really get an answer where everybody's going to be happy. You're going to please somebody one time, and you're going to really make someone else very angry, but know that our hearts are in the right place, and we're trying to do the best, for our students first, and for our community. And I thank you all for, for coming and being a part of this. We really invite everyone to be a part of what's going on in, on in our district, and we're trying to be as transparent as possible. So thank you for your support, and again, I thank our cabinet members and my board for all of the support and for the work that you do. Flores.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay. Had several meetings this month, the technology meeting, Green Committee meeting, of course, we met as a board to discuss the issues that were going on in, in our community. That was a very interesting and thoughtful meeting, and I really, really appreciate all the effort the administration put into making everything go as quickly as possible. One of the fun things I did this past month was, I went to Warner Grove and saw Tony Burrow and her robotics team working, and they were just, just outstanding. They were there on a Saturday, they were, everybody was supposed to be there, was there, kids would go to soccer and come back, they were there for about six or seven hours on Saturday, just working on robotics, having a great time, learning, and it was very exciting, very exciting, to see the look in these kids' eyes, to just light up when they, when they discover something. It's all the teachings all about, so. She's done a great job with them, I know they had a competition this past week, I don't know how they did, you might know?
I never heard of her, so, but she has been in touch with us about future projects already, since she mentioned that she was there, so, there's more, more scheduled.
Yeah, yeah, she's, she's go-getter, so, we're very fortunate to have her in our district, that's for sure. On the facility side, we broke ground on the new salt shed this week, and so that'll be up and running hopefully by mid-February, if not sooner. So that's a long-term help to the district financially. We won't have to pay so much for salt, we won't have to pay rental, we won't have to pay a lot of things, and it'll help us out tremendously, not just on short-term, but of the long term, so, that's all I have.
I plan to report to you tonight on the superintendent search, so mine might be a little lengthy, but there's a lot of information here to share with you since our last meeting. As we're placed in Education Week with West Anglos Coast, School Spring Online, Missouri Association of School Administrators, Illinois Association of School Administrators, ProAct website, and the ProAct Search Blog. The sites, they have sent out emails, they have contacted administrators in Missouri, the Midwest, and nationwide, superintendents nationwide in districts of smaller, of similar size, members of new leaders for schools, professional education and business organizations and leaders nationwide, individuals known to or listed, maintained by ProAct Search, and executives in higher education. So, as of December 8th, ProAct Search received a hundred and four candidates applying for our superintendent position, and I just think, with everything that's going on, that is just an awesome number, and says a lot for our district and our community. I have it broken out for you, and the gender is sixty-seven point three percent males and twenty-eight point nine percent females, and three percent point eight don't want to tell us what it was. We have fifty-one percent African-Americans, thirty-three point six percent Caucasian, four point eight percent Hispanics, two point nine percent multiracial, one point nine percent American Indian, and five point eight percent who do not want to share with us. Years of relevant experience, zero to five years is sixteen percent, five to ten years is thirteen point five percent, ten to fifteen years is eleven point five percent, fifteen to twenty years, fifteen point four percent, twenty to twenty-five years, eighteen point three percent, twenty-five to thirty years, thirteen point five, and thirty and over years, eleven point five percent. The current geographical region, thirty-nine point four percent are from the Midwest, twenty-two percent are from the South, the Southwest, fifteen point four percent, the East Coast, fifteen point four percent, outside continental U.S., one point nine percent, and don't want to share with us, five point eight percent. Current past ties to the Ferguson-Florissant School District, our Missouri, yes, there were seventy- were 73.1% and no, 22.1% had 4.8% that wanted disclosed. So they are continuing to recruit until December 15th, and then the screening of candidates, including interviews, data dashboards, and other information will be next. On January 7th, there will be a closed session, Board of Education meeting for them to present eight to 12 candidates to the board, and then at that time, they would like for us to narrow it down to approximately six, and that meeting is at 6 o'clock on January 7th. And they are continuing to coordinate interviews as necessary, and then the finalist interviews that we will open up to the community will also be done. So they are moving along, and we should have something more in January. This is P on 7.
As Mr. Ebert had said, that we are going to grant a board and bond issue in April, we'll be having that on the agenda in January for a formal approval for the board. At this time, I'm going to, I want to do Mr. Green, and he can act, and he also has, Dr. LaRue has notes from Mr. Brown and his meeting, so, Mr. Green, if you would use that.
Thank you. Greetings to the board, greetings to everyone tonight. I'm going to be short and sweet. We are at the halfway point traditionally, and the teachers are really ready for a break. Some of the students said so, with the staff and everyone else, so we are looking forward to this, revving our engines, getting nice and rested to open the second half of the year. On behalf of the NBA, I wish everyone a happy holiday, get rest, and we're going to go ahead with the second half. I'm sure the best is yet to come, and we can't wait to show you what we've got. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And just to keep Brown's absence tonight, I'd like to share some of the recent developments on our stakeholder and community engagement initiative. We are nearing completion on a parent survey, which will ask parents questions about their key concerns, communication and engagement preferences. This survey will help us understand what our parents and students need, they want to develop for improved connections between home and school. This survey will be launched in January of 2015. Members of the Faith Community Partnership, consisting of clergy for the gay churches located in the district, are meeting tomorrow evening to continue their work following the clergy practice the district hosted in October. Dr. Runland Diggs and Mr. Kevin Hampton have been instrumental in developing this initiative to partner with churches in our district to support student achievement. Along with Dr. Thurman, they are visiting churches on Sundays to speak with members about how they can help support our local schools. This initiative is also responsible for the development of a plan to offer meals, educational opportunities, and counseling services during school closures due to community unrest. Seven area churches opened their doors to students on November 25th. Mayor Mark and food service personnel volunteered their time and prepared over a thousand lunches, which were delivered to the open churches by six additional churches. A testament to the dedication and caring of our staff, more than 90 district teachers volunteered to assist with food distribution and educational opportunities. The Faith Community Partnership is also involved in an effort seeking to bring United States Secretary of Education, Mr. Arnie Duncan, to St. Louis to speak at a church in our district in observance of Justice Sunday on January 18th, 2015. We'll be able to have more information on that in the near future. And finally, the last comment from Mr. Brown. The district will reintroduce our community newsletter in early 2015. This newsletter will be distributed to all student households and registered voters in the district, and will contain information on recent and current events for our families and neighbors. Many stakeholders have expressed their interest in restoring the district newsletter, and are happy to be able to be responsive to those requests. Over the last few weeks, we've worked diligently to keep our focus on teaching and learning, and to ensure that our students have a strong finish to the first semester. Finals are coming up. We credit our students, as well as their families, for working with us as we navigate through these challenging times. We have had opportunities through the United States Department of Justice, through community outreach, we've had high school programs, center school programs, the Viper Program, and we've also been in touch, have communications with the United States Department of Education. We're sensitive to our students' needs, and their strong interest in having their rostrum. We also believe that our primary mission is to educate, and that by adhering to that mission, we can play an important role in creating a brighter future for all. Though instructional time must be protected, appropriate opportunities are being devoted to help students discuss and process events that occurred in a way that promotes understanding. Recent days, similar high school students, excuse me, have contributed hard work and poetry for displays at their schools, and our staff will continue to find opportunities for appropriate self-expression that respects all of student's rights and rights reserved, and our responsibility as educators. We will clear about this, that we are all learning. We are all learning, and we will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders opportunity to comment on both the GIN items and non-GIN items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out the comment card with the name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board or request to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and given district policies, 405, 4405, guiding personnel law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers, during the public comment period, the board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board at this time? Remember, we're always available to you. We'll give you emails, calls.
Agenda item number seven, Declaration of.
Oh, sorry. I want to address the board, but I'm a home one of my son's, in my son's group, so can I do that now?
If you could at the time you need, if you could fill out the form, this will just allow us to follow up if needed, if necessary.
All right. My hand is very light, I'm a student, I assume they will go along. My son, he's our student, no problems, no anything. Now, he's been a football player, he's been a football player for two years. He's ready to do another, you know, run track. For the track, you're the track coach, and I let the football players run the track. What am I supposed to do about that? Do I need to pay my son out of this year? Or do I mean, I don't talk to the coaches? I don't talk to other people at Oakwood, I don't know. I don't like giving names, but I feel that my son is doing his job at the school as a student, and he want to run track. Because he played football, you shouldn't deny him to run track. And that's how I feel. All the football players, my son, can't get picked up at the high school. What am I supposed to do with my son? He goes wrong streets for three hours, he goes to the weight room, he gotta keep out the weight room. Why are you picking these students out? Now they have no work to do. What am I supposed to do? What does other, other parents that pick their kids up supposed to do? I don't have money to pay nobody, watch you, these kind of school. I didn't purchase his football, I didn't purchase it for all this stuff went on. I have to protect my son, so I feel you'd be better here for three hours, than there. What am I supposed to do? Like I say, he don't have nothing to do out of the school now. He's on the outdoor, he's just walking. Anything can happen, then who am I supposed to blame? Myself? No. My son needs to be able to do anything for this district if I'm a taxpayer. Help me, can somebody help me?
Is there anybody else at this time? Well, we'll have a recess after our next statement, and then you get Dr. LaRue, okay?
Thank you.
Dick, anybody else? Agenda item number seven, Declaration of Candidacy. The three-year terms of Ferguson-Florissant School Board members Paul Schrader and Brian Scott Ebert expires in April 2015. Declaration of Candidacy may be picked up in the office of the superintendent at 1005 Lottifree Drive, Florissant, Missouri, from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on the days the district is open. Under Missouri law, the first day to file as a candidate is Tuesday, December 16th, 2014. Biden closes at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 20th, 2015. School district offices will be closed Monday, December 22nd, 2014, through Friday, January 2nd, 2015. The annual election for the Board of Education is Tuesday, April 7th, 2015. The person who wishes to file for candidacy for the Board of Education must be a citizen of the United States, at least 24 years old, a resident taxpayer of the school district, or resident of the state of Missouri for at least one year. In addition, the candidate must follow these procedures: file a declaration of candidacy, line up, or file in pursuit of district policy 4013.
All right, thank you. The Board of Education will now take a short recess to congratulate those recognized in the meeting and the rest of the district. At 7:45, the intended break will resume at 7:55. Great. Consent agenda. The administration presents the following items for approval under the consent agenda. Mr. Morris, who completes the consent agenda, disperse to us.
A roll. Teacher and non-teacher, $8,597,789.06. Operational dispersments, $2,990, $90,255.48, for a grand total of $11,588,14.54.
Are we accept the consent agenda?
Seconded.
They're moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Very none. This is just our staff. We're going to move off the agenda for just a moment, because we do have a couple of announcements we do want to make. Pardon me.
Forgive us some permission from earlier, but Ferguson-Florissant School District just pleased to announce that we have two new doctors on our staff, two of our principals, Dr. Leslie Washington Thomas and Dr. Lisa Hazel. We're very pleased and proud of their recognition.
All right, we're going to move into curriculum instructions. GIN item 10, build level progress, Dr. Blan.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At this time, I'm going to ask the principal of Parker Road to come up, Chris Beal, and she will have a presentation for you.
Good evening, and thank you, Board of Education, Mr. LaRue, Dr. Diggs, and Dr. Blan. I really do appreciate this time to just talk a little bit about some of the wonderful academic successes and initiatives that we have thus far at Parker Road Elementary School this year. I want to first start by, now I'm going to flip this a little bit, I know this usually happens at the end, but I feel that this is the most important reason why I'm even standing up here, so I'm going to do it first. I have a pretty large support group from Parker Road here with me tonight, so if I could have any teachers, staff, families, students that are from Parker Road, please stand. And the reason that I did that was because, in all honesty, the people that are behind me, and I know Lori's up here in the front, those are the people that really are the true successors for our students. They are the capacity that keeps us running every day, they're there to support me. I know that my job is to be there to support them, but they have done an outstanding job this year, and none of these things would even come close to happening if it weren't for the people that were in this room. So I wanted to acknowledge them before I got to the end of the presentation, because most of what you'll see in this presentation is due to all of their hard work, so I appreciate you giving me the time for that. So I hope that you can see that okay. We are just going to talk a little bit about some of our outstanding academic initiatives, and we at Parker Road don't want to let the issues and struggles and challenges that we've had this year in Ferguson-Florissant define us, we want to define them with our successful academics and PBIS, and we have truly had a very successful first semester of this year. And so when we're looking at our academic initiatives and successes at Parker Road, we have implemented Writer's Workshop 100% in our building, and when I say 100%, I mean 100%. Our students are sustaining longer writing times, 45 minutes to 60 minutes, they are writing more meaningful pieces of writing, they're connecting their writing to their reading, to everything that they do, social studies, science, math, art, PE. Everything that we do in our building goes back to our writing, and so, and that is from our implementation of our Writer's Workshop. So we believe that this year, we've not only started it at the beginning of the year, but we have fully implemented that across the board. With Reader's Workshop, that's also a component that we have started this year, and I know as a district, on our timeline, we do not need to have that fully implemented until next year, but my staff has actually went above and beyond, and we have started to fully implement that already this year. When I spoke with them and said, you know, we have some time, we're going to do some more training, you know, we want to take it slow, they were ready to go, they were ready to jump in on their own, they were ready to start observing, researching, reading, doing everything that they could to get ready, so when we did implement, they were ready for the implementation piece. And so I think this is kind of going in and out, can you tell? Does it sound funny, or is it just me? It's okay? Okay. And so 100% of my staff are either researching, they've been to other buildings to observe balanced literacy models and components of the Reader's Workshop, and implementation of at least one strategy in all of our classrooms, if not more. Data teams, we have been running data teams in our building for several years now, but I really feel that this year, it's very, very successful, because we're not only running data teams with pre-test data, post-test data, instructional strategies every other week, but we're also meeting on the off week just to collaborate as a grade level, to plan, to decide what to do with our data. What do we do with the kids that got it? What do we do with the kids that didn't get it, and all of the kids in between? And so that is just a way that we live in our building. Data is what we do, and the data team process is very, very strong, and the way that we can see that is through the growth of our students on all of their assessments and their star testing. Common formative assessments, I want to talk about that as well. We connect everything that we do in our building to our learning targets, and so depending on what the standard is and what that unwrapped standard is in our building, our students are being assessed on that constantly, so that what they know or what they don't know will drive our teachers' instruction, and that has shown up in success of our students as well. Parker Road PBIS, we've also excelled this year with our PBIS. We have a school within a school, alternative setting within Parker Road, and right now, our data is, we have had three suspensions since the beginning of the year, and so I think that that is outstanding, and they're not being suspended because they're in the classrooms, they're engaged, and they're learning, and we're maximizing instructional time. If they are not able to do that, then we provide the interventions that they need in the school. We don't send them home, we want them here with us as much. We want them here with us as much as possible learning. And so we have provided an alternative setting within our school. And if students are struggling or need some one-on-one or some behavior interventions, that's where they go to receive those interventions. And we work with the student and the family to keep them in school. So as of now, we have three suspensions and we have 11 referrals. And what we've done with those 11 referrals, we've targeted those specific behaviors, and we are reteaching and rewarding and doing those things to help those students learn, to have some more appropriate behaviors in those areas. Once I talked about the school within a school, alternative setting, we also are continuing our Studio Schools model this year through homeschool. And I presented on that last year. So once again, we have 14 interns within our school, and they have been vital in professional development, one-on-one time with teachers, and also intervention groups with students. And so here is some of our success. From, as you can see, the bar in the red is our current year. We've had two benchmarking periods for STAR, and then the brown is last year. So as you can see, those are the numbers of students that are at or above grade level currently in our building. We also have several data boards throughout our school. We just recently turned in our data dashboard to Dr. Bland, and we have shown that every grade level has almost decreased by half. The number of students in the 20th percentile or below on our STAR testing from first benchmark to second benchmark. So we have had a lot of academic successes in our building. And I think that that is attributed to not only the PBIS that we have, we're maximizing all of our instructional time, and we're engaging our students using our three indicators for me. And so once again, I feel that this has been an outstanding year for Parker Road. The students are excelling. We have wonderful families, we have a very strong staff and a very strong community here. So I thank you for your time this evening.
Questions for the Board? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to present Jeremy Pellet, Principal at Crosskey Middle School, who will present a new program that is new to Crosskeys this year, and an updated accountability for language share with the Board via PowerPoint that is presenting this evening on Writer's Workshop.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I wanted to present a little bit this evening on Writer's Workshop. I'm pretty excited about this. It's a new program that we've used to restructure our ELA classes at the middle school level. And basically what this is, is, and obviously Ms. Yu will just refer to Writer's Workshop, I'm going to elaborate a bit on that. But what this is, is it's a goal for us to produce students who are creative writers, who write with an audience in mind, and have a way to write in different means that are useful in everyday life. If they need to write a lab report, if they need to write a review or persuasive letter, something in that fashion, they write with that mind, they create a piece of art, not just for a grade, but for a purpose for themselves. So what it is, it's basically a framework for instruction and practice. And it has all these attributes that you'll see popping up here. I didn't realize you could read on smaller moniters. Hopefully you can read through those things. But the crux of it is this with the framework. One, it provides dedicated time for students to write in a sustained way, as Ms. Yu referred to before, and it provides scaffolding for writing so that we can differentiate instruction. So we can look at a student's strengths or weaknesses and provide them support through conferencing. That's a real key goal. What it isn't is a very prescribed way of writing. It's not a writing prompt. It's not just talking about the process and sticking to a process. It's not about producing a specific product, like a brochure or a specific theme that you have to write on. And it is also not so specific that they can't be independent. It allows for independence, but not willy-nilly so that they're writing about whatever. There's always a goal in mind with their writing. So how does that look? The basics of the writing workshop, I like this is, so three or four components to a lesson, and then assessment is blended into that process. Lucy Cawkins is the one who most recently has defined this, put this into a very nifty little lesson plan that is really, it's supposed to go over 120 minutes. We've distilled it down to about 60 minutes for us. But it is broken down into four, three to four basic parts. Those components are the mini lesson. And here's the hard part. It's a short lesson, it's on 10 to 15 minutes. This is difficult for teachers because we like to talk, right? So putting your lesson and all that great stuff you wanna share with people into 10 to 15 minutes is pretty difficult. Those four parts, that mini lesson is broken into four parts. You create a connection to some previous learning from the previous day. Then we add a little bit of instruction from the teacher, key points that we, or a key point that we want to emphasize and have students work on for that day. And then we move into some active learning for the student, a little guided practice with the teacher, and also, and then students can work together, turn to a shoulder partner, take out their writings, talk about ways they can identify the issue that the teacher's working on. And then we follow that up with a link to how we're going to learn for that day or continue learning. So the next part of that is this. It's the writing time and conferencing time. This is huge. Students then write independently and silently for 20 to 40 minutes, depending on the structure, how much time you have in your day. But they write in a sustained way, and they write in a very intentional way. So this teaches a couple of skills. But then the other thing this does is they're writing intently over this period of time. It provides the opportunity for the teacher to conference because the conferencing is the way we differentiate instruction and we really help promote learning for students. If there is an opportunity, there might be a mid-lesson teaching point that I don't have listed there. There could be another layering on, producing a greater skill level with that writing. Or it could simply be, I'm seeing these errors in students' work, and I need to go back over some stuff. And then finally, we finish with just five minutes of a shared degree. Teacher celebrates maybe so-and-so's doing this work or anything. I like the way you added detail to this piece of work. So that is basically the structure of a Writer's Workshop lesson. Now, we've had to make a middle school adjustment because a couple of years ago, we had to reduce the number of ELA teachers that we had at middle school level. We had two period teaching teams writing, so now we only have one, but we do it for about 55 minutes. Well, you can't really see the times there. But basically what it shows, and we structured this, if we have a writing major, writing major cycle that we're going through, we don't forget the reading aspect. We know reading's important to this, so we infused reading to the day, which adds the opportunity for more conferencing because it would be independent reading during the time. Then, as I've said, assessment is an important part of the learning process. This is really more, it's not about grades as much as it is about, it's about the conversations you're having with the students and people knowing where they are in the lessons. We have checklists that are involved with this. Students are given, for instance, this is an eighth-grade narrative writing checklist. The student can assess what they understand, what they haven't started, and what they need more work on. You check that out. So that helps them to keep track of their own learning. It's important to make that intrinsic. Rubers guide and help guide the teacher through the assessment process. Again, this is an eighth-grade rubric. You can see it's pretty detailed. But what it does is it provides a continuum. On the left, you'll see sixth grade, on the right, you'll see ninth grade. And the student can see, and the teacher can see where a student is in their learning process for each of those component parts of a writing piece. So whether they're working on a lead, they can see that they're writing at the sixth-grade level, but I need to go this far to get to, say, an eighth-grade level and be proficient at that point. Conferences, as I mentioned, are super important to the Writer's Workshop process. That's the beauty of this thing. It has provided an opportunity for teachers to actually give specific grade level feedback. This is an example of a sample sheet where a teacher can note strengths, weaknesses, and teaching points, or next steps for students. And they document those notes there because you wouldn't want to just have the conference. You want to make note of progress and have direction for the next time we speak with students. We take that information and we can organize students into areas of weakness. The great thing about this is it allows us to put subgroups together so that we can have specific teaching points. Instead of working all over the place with a group of four or five students, we work on one specific priority teaching point with that student. This is an example of how a teacher might find that together. You have a teaching point where a student is working on elaboration with their writing project. So you write the writers that are under that specific needed area. It allows you a quick way to organize the students when they come into class the next day. So reading and writing, what's the link between these two things? You can see there. So we're really working on the writer's craft. When we work on the writer's craft, we're still building reading skills for our students. All of these things that we know are part of literacy, that are part of what is needed to be a literate person and a good writer, because we're trying to produce the best writers we can. All these things are supported during those conversations, during those teaching points that we do during our lessons. Vanderbilt University says teaching students how to write strengthens their comprehension, fluency, and word reading skills. Increasing how much students write improves how well they read. Now, I'm not going to give you, this has been part of learning curve with our teachers, with us and our students, because this is unlike any way we've taught reading and writing before. But it's great stuff. Our students are engaged in a way that they have never been engaged in the writing. They're writing lengthier pieces, more voluminous numbers of pieces so that we have multiple things that we're working on. And honestly, they're much more dedicated to the writing process. So it's very impressive what they're doing. And the great thing is, we're doing this K8 now. So six years from now, we should have students who are well-used to this process and are really becoming expertly in the way they write. So I'm excited for what's coming down the line for us. We're producing students that are, you know, expert writers who are college and career ready. Thank you. Do you have any questions? I know it was a little long.
Do you have anybody with you?
Sher Evans, one of my workshop members this year. Thank you for coming, Sher. Ms. John Jee was, this may be the first time she's had an extended writing piece where every student, 110 students, turned in the writing. That's very, very impressive. And again, it's about the process of talking about writing, not the actual teaming process. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Move into agenda item 11, Mark Twain Student Support Center at Risk Program.
Director Waller is here tonight to present the Mark Twain Student Support at Risk Program for Board Action. The help program serves middle, primarily middle school and high school students who are in extended suspension from their home schools or who are placed with Mark Twain Student Support Center for more intense academic and social skills support. Additionally, there is one elementary classroom. The Mark Twain Students support curriculum follows the district requirements with an emphasis on aggression replacement training. Elementary students in need of alternative educational services are also served at the building level through the school and the school concept, which you heard briefly about in the school's presentation. So, Dr. Waller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight on behalf of Mark Twain Student Support Center and at-risk programs. The Mark Twain Student Support Center is the alternative school serving students kindergarten through 12th grade throughout the entire district of Ferguson Flores. Our primary goals and focal points include academic achievement, behavior, and character development. Student enrollment. Last year, the 2013-14 school year, we had a total of 494 students, 10 through Mark Twain. Thirty-eight of those students actually graduated and had received their high school diplomas. For 2014-15, so far, we have serviced 242 students through November 19 of 2014. And we've actually added on top of that number since then in the past three weeks. And we'll probably reach upwards or beyond 500 students by the end of the school year. In enrollment per program, thus far this year, we have had 14 elementary students, 45 middle school students, 183 high school students. And broken down within those high school students population, we also have a Missouri Option Prep, which has housed 80 students, Missouri Options 7, and ATCOP 9. Those particular programs, starting with ATCOP, is a special school district program designed for students falling behind in credits despite other interventions that have been put in place for them in their home schools. Elements specific to the ATCOP program include participation in community-based vocational instructions and also students working towards recovering lost credit. So basically, we wanna get them back on track to graduation. Similar is the Missouri Option Program, however, does not sanction by a special school district. It is a Missouri-approved program that is designed for students 17 years of age or older that are at least a year behind their kindergarten cohort. There are requirements to get into programs such as completion of the test of the whole basic education, completion and earned credit for health, government, and personal finance, passing constitution both Missouri and the United States, complete all end-of-course exams, and in addition to their coursework, they have to provide community service or job experience of 15 hours or more per week. The Missouri Option Prep Program, what we have found is several of those, several students throughout the district are tracked towards, or geared towards, the Missouri Option Program, however they fall short in their completion of the test of the whole basic education or one or more of the prerequisite courses. Therefore, we put in place a Missouri Option Prep Program that transitions those students and still gives them the opportunity to graduate through the Missouri Option Program despite their deficiencies. As of this year, something new to our program is a middle school hold classroom. This has been quite successful thus far. It's a program developed to provide in-school education for those middle school students currently under a 10-day suspension and awaiting their discipline hearing. Students served so far this school year are 24 middle school students, saving a total amount of days and academic environment of 124 through November 19 of 2014. And again, we have exceeded that number over the past three weeks as well. I believe we are closer to about 40 students, 30. 30 students. Academic initiatives. With such a transient population, we utilize Skills Tutor to provide ongoing assessment of student growth in ELA and math courses. Thus far this school year, we've experienced a 21% growth in ELA and 19% growth in math, and that is building-wide. We have also implemented writing-to-learn strategies, monthly building-wide writing prompts and assessment. And once per week, students during their academic lab time drop everything and focus strictly on reading. Student supports, in addition to what we provide on an academic basis, are the morning gathering, which students receive a positive and motivational message accompanied by controlled breathing exercise trying to get them ready for their day. Aggression replacement training, utilizing the PCE curriculum, emphasizing empathy, anger management, character education, and social skills. And we also have variety behavior intervention groups, which are small groups, and we attempt to modify student behavior by identifying the top five building and district discipline incidents and then creating lessons to work through with the children, trying to modify those behaviors. These are just some pictures of students being engaged in some of the activities that we do provide. And lastly, this year, we, well, this actually started last January. However, this is the first year that we have fully implemented grade circle therapists into our program. We have two grade circle therapists that are housed on campus with us daily, and they provide therapeutic programming such as individual therapy, group therapy, and family therapy. So students that are participating in the Mark Twain Student Support Center programs are also invited and encouraged, and we highly promote that they receive this therapy as well. It does extend into the home, and we are also looking at opportunities to extend that offering to students when they do return to their home school, which is our ultimate goal, is to transition them positively and provide some support ongoing. And I do have one staff member with me, Mr. Paul Marioldis, is our administrative intern. And I would like to say that this is his first year, and he has done a wonderful job. At this time, do you have any questions?
I'd like to move the reading through the growth of the report.
Questions to make at second? All in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say aye.
Question? I guess we should have had a discussion before we voted. I apologize. But I will extend it at this point.
I just, I just like to say, I appreciate all you do and your staff. I can't imagine the difficult situations that you encounter on a daily, hourly basis. But I've said many times, I But I've said many times, I refuse to believe that we can't find some good in all these kids. And, you know, I appreciate, you know, everything, any situation, how you change on, you know, minute to minute. And you're grinning, because you can't imagine what it's like. So tell everybody tomorrow, you know, it doesn't go unnoticed by this board what your building's doing for this district.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Is this one? That's the one as best we can. Just a comment, because I'm guessing I know the answer, but I think it would be helpful to everyone. So often, people think if you have an alternative education setting, should stay there. And I don't think that's the case for us. And presenting that data, I think, would be very powerful, because I know, as I taught, I had students that would come from Mark Twain, and they never went back. So you guys do some really, really great kids with those kids, and they go on and get their acts together, and I think more often than general public believes.
Lot of success stories, absolutely.
I think it's fantastic that you have so many layers. If you can't get them in one place, you can get them somewhere else.
Right.
And that means that you're really trying to support all the special needs of these students who are struggling with whatever it is, if it's discipline or academics or whatever. And that just shows, again, this district and how dedicated you are to making sure that every child is successful. So thank you.
Any other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. McMillan, it's a staff request.
Good evening, members of the board. Good evening. You can hear it on the side, sorry. Members of the board and all staff members. This evening, we have two requests for additional staff for consideration of board education. The first is to add an additional section of Health and Feed at the third ward high school. And we would like to move forward and ask for additional sections. And in fact, we previously asked for two sections, and in fact, we're not going to use those sections. As we continue to work forward and deal with scheduling, the opposing principal, Dr. Hopper, was able to continue to put students in touch with us and how to have to use those too. So this evening, we are coming back to you asking for additional section for Health and Feed and try to provide more information. I'll give to Dr. Hopper here in a second, and also Dr. Weisel for questions.
I move that we accept and help feed the second semester.
Second.
Motion made second. Any questions?
I just have a comment, and I really appreciate the data. It shows the need, and it makes it very clear, and it makes it helpful for us to see the reality of what you're talking about.
Any other additional comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the additional section of Health and Feed, the second semester of the Florida Board. Say aye. All those opposed, say aye. Hearing none, ayes have it.
I move that we accept the school nurse, so that we have one at every one.
Second.
What school would they be located at? Say the name. What drove you to that request? I knew there was a, it were reduced at one point due to drug exchange.
She asked because we knew that Dini wasn't going to be here. What she said was that the changed circumstances with the increased number of students with diabetes, I bet students that have entered the district, that feels essential based on those needs, the health needs of students, to make sure that they are, especially the type of nurses, I mean, or nurse access in those buildings. And the aid that has been used would also then be dedicated to Mark Twain, which is what has happened in the past. Because they have some very significant health matters that's involved.
And if this was approved, would they start at the beginning of the next semester? Questions? Motion made second, and all in favor of the additional school nurse. Say aye. All those opposing, say aye. We're up again with the 2015-2016 school calendar. This will be the first meeting.
The calendar committee, the main of the woodshedders and also our teaching staff, built a student tennis calendar, also certified works, staff board calendar for 15-16 school year. This calendar was designed to provide the most optimal instructional calendar for student learning and increase professional development opportunities. This evening, we have the calendar for you with state brochure reading, and if you'd like to walk into the calendar and use the background regarding it. Our GESU requires that each school have 174 student tennis day requirement. Our calendar has 179 days. GESU requires students attend 1,044 student tennis hours. The elementary calendar has 1,094, the secondary calendar has 1,110 hours. This would provide 188 teacher days. This includes four orientation days at the end of the school year, three pool days of professional development, and then eight half-days of professional development. There are three non-contract days. Those are August 12th, August, or excuse me, August 12th, November 25th, and March 18th. This still maintains the two-week winter break. And then there's an exchange day for teachers after the fall parent teacher conferences. This also still maintains the one-week spring break and allows us to be out from school prior to November 11th. We felt that from the calendar committee, that this goes the best calendar to produce this point in time. This is the first reading, and then we're agreeing with the acting department on negotiations at the end of the year.
Thank you. Any other question?
I can't see that group. When's the last day of school again?
That would be the 27th.
27th. And then, snow days, and that would just be added on, is that clear? So how we're doing it?
Well, currently, you have initial days that are both in the calendar.
Right.
So the state requirement's 174, your calendar has 179. If the board shows the state 179, and any additional, any snow days, then we add on. If the board allowed the district to come down from the 179 standard, then if we have a snow day, we can continue to just reduce days until we have that 174.
Any else? Thank you very much. Ms. Kruzik, the employee wellness committee obtained this is for more information only.
Good evening, Board of Education. As Mr. Ebert explained earlier, we do have some extra costs that are coming down the pipe with the Affordable Healthcare Act. So it's very important for us to look at different ways that the district can save money for our healthcare. One of the initiatives that I would like to move forward with at this time, that we feel that would help shape the district's money and also promote wellness, well-being within our employees, is a district employee wellness plan, and I would like to go over that a little bit with you guys. Our membership currently, we have 1,276 employees that the district provides insurance for. Those employees provide, we have 1,014 dependents that employees pay for, and we have 160 retirees that are on our plan at this time. The cost of the plan, $1.3 million is administrative cost, and that goes to our third-party administrator and United Healthcare, and there are other administrative costs in there. $3 million of it go on towards pharmaceutical costs, and $9.4 million go towards medical costs. So every year, we spend approximately $13.7 million in medical costs. And with the premiums, $2.2 million come from the employee contributions for their dependents. The district provides, spends $9.8 million on the employees' insurance, and then retirees contribute $1.5 million for their benefits. And if we, the insurance company looked at some of their other clients and looked at the district costs for employee, for their, for the different districts, and we were clearly, we spend more on our employees for their healthcare, which we believe had a lot of higher costs for our employees than the other districts that our client, ours administrator serves. Specifically, what does a typical organization look like? For every 100 employees, 25 of them have cardiovascular diseases, 12 are asthmatic, 6 are diabetic, 26 have high blood pressure, 35 have high blood cholesterol, 38 are overweight. We have 21 smoke, 31 use alcohol excessively, 20 don't wear seatbelts, which I'm not sure how we can do that, but we can make awareness. 24 don't exercise, and 44 suffer from stress. And I can say right now that probably all of our population suffers from stress, but in this survey for 100 employees, it's 44. And the cost of an unhealthy lifestyle, 5,816 typically is a healthcare cost for people that smoke. For people that are obese, it costs about $1,400. Those that have diabetes, it costs us about $6,600. And then for those that aren't physically active, it costs us about $3,138. And then the percentage of chronic diseases caused by a poor lifestyle, you have 71% of people that get cancer because they have poor lifestyles, 70% have strokes, 82% have heart disease, and 91% have diabetes. And diabetes right now in our district is currently the largest population of what's wrong with our population. And so when you look at it, there is something called absenteeism, which is whenever people are sick, they don't come to work, they go to the back room, they stay home. There's also something called presentheism, that they do come to work, they don't feel good. And when you don't feel good, then you're not really productive. So you're sitting there thinking, oh, God, your head hurts, you know, your knees hurt, you don't want to get up, walk across the room, you just are miserable. And so you're here, and you're at your desk, but you're not really here. So there's a lot of different percentages of employees, of percentages of people that have these different diabetes and depression and things like that for both absenteeism and presentheism. And so what a wellness plan does, if we can, if a district can pull a wellness plan across the district, then we can help combat some of these things and maybe make absenteeism and absenteeism less prevalent within our district. For every dollar that we spend on healthcare, we would save $3.48 with a wellness plan. And it would also help their absenteeism. For every dollar we spend on a wellness plan, we would have, we would save $5.08 if we had implemented an employee wellness plan. So helping people improve better business. And the fact is, when people are happier and healthier, they're better employees. They're happier, they're more productive. When they're unhealthy, they generally are sluggish, they're overtired, and they have really high moral issues. And so we're hoping to correct some of that with a wellness plan. So where do we go from here? Right now, we're in the process of recruiting a teacher or support staff from every location. So I talked to the principals, and I said, please talk to your staff, find someone that's very energetic, someone that's very interested in providing a good lifestyle, and that will help spread wellness within their community, of your school, or your location. So that's what we're asking for right now. I've been getting people's names, and we're really excited about that. I asked Kelly Christo, who is our dietitian, she's very, she's a go-getter, and she's very passionate wellness, and so she's going to spearhead this. She's going to help us to be our committee leader. She's going to help us with this program. We're going to, once we get our community together, we're going to meet in January, and we're going to look at data, and we're going to send out a survey and see what it is that we need on employees, what is it that our employees are looking for in wellness. And we're also going to look at the data from the insurance companies and see, we know diabetes, we know the health, heart problems are prevalent. So we're going to look and take out that data and analyze it, and figure it is what it is that we need to move forward, and then we'll set our goals. We're going to kick this off in February for Heart Month, and so we think it's really important, we're really excited. We have a mission statement already, and that is just to promote and improve employee wellness and reduce health risks through variety of education and wellness activities. The program aims to engage employees, strengthen and maintain employee health, and enhance their overall well-being. And so the wellness program will include a campaign that includes posters, initiatives, and things that we can put around the school, newsletters, things that we can put, send out emails, so that we can get the employees engaged and active, because we've got to have eye for this to work. So it's really important for our staff that are on part of that committee to go back and be excited and spread the word about their role and to come on board. We're going to take health risk assessments. One of the things that we want to do is send a nurse out to each school to take some assessments to test for diabetes, to kind of get those people off of some programs, to see if we can help them move into a better direction with exercise and better eating. We're going to hold educational seminars, we're going to try to have some health pairs and onsite events, and then we're going to try to do some weight loss and fitness programs. And with that, we're going to try to have a desired outcome of decreased absenteeism, which will reduce our cost for subs and overtime costs for people that have to fill in for people that are not here. We're going to try to reduce our cost to train our replacement employees, so people that are sick and have to leave for long-term disabilities, we won't have to replace them and hire new ones and try to retrain them. And we're hoping for fewer workplace injuries. And then we're also going to witness our desired outcome is actually to reduce our healthcare costs and change the types and the numbers of claims that we have over time. And we're also going to try to have people to use our preventive health services better, so we're going to try to promote that so that people go to the doctor more often and see their doctoring, catch their diseases before they get too bad. And then we would just like to increase the percentage of employees who self-report their health and increase the number of employees that go to a physician for visits. We would like to create a communication plan to keep wellness at the forefront. Again, we have to keep people engaged in this, or it's not going to work. And so we're going to create a branding and logo, and we're going to have a district webpage on our district website so that people can go get answers to questions that they have. And Kelly and the group is going to help them do that. And it just has to be a component of our culture. It's not something that we put a band-aid on, this is something that we have to embrace and we build with our culture. So we want to be thoughtful of our employees, we happen to know that we value them, that they're, and they will be more loyal to us and be more happy and more productive in the classroom, too. So this is what one of the desires, the culture of health, the change of culture of health. We want to be one of those. My goal is to be one of the top districts in the, you know, in the stateless business journal, they always have it's the best place to work, and that's my goal, is that we can develop a culture so that we're the best district in the stateless surrounding area.
Do you have any questions?
On your chart about approximate percentage of annual workload loss, those percentages get tight, you know. Was that specifically our population, or is that from a general study?
It's from a general study.
From the general study?
Yeah. So that 100 people that choose those are.
Okay, I must want to clarify that, because I looked at some of those numbers, and that made me a little nervous.
Right.
It's not our specific population.
Not our specific 100 people.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Laura, I guess part of the implementation will be, hopefully, with Paul said, something like that, so we have a benchmark.
Yes, yes, and as we're looking at the data, the committee will get together, will look at the data, and we'll be able to provide, because we do have that data, we will extract it out to our wellness committees so that they can make decisions on what programs will last for our employees. So it won't be a program that will fit everybody in the world, it's just for specific to us.
I'd like to comment particularly on future absenteeism. That really impacts student achievement also. And I think that would be a good thing to come back with us, we can show that that's dropped. That only does not save us money, but then we know that's improving our education also for our kids.
Because when you're healthier, you have better morale and healthy advice on your kids.
You ready? Thank you. So you're up again with a tax anticipation note, is this for board action?
The Board of Education of any school district in the state honor the majority of members of the board. They borrow funds for use of the various funds of the district, including the debt service fund, and they issue negotiable notes and evidence thereof to allow for the revenues derived from school taxes or other school revenues for the purpose of funds in any year when the notes are issued. I am requesting, or the administration's requesting, securing a tax anticipation note to borrow five million dollars for anticipated technicals in January due deposit to the special credit fund by December disbursement. The closing date will be December eleventh, which is tomorrow, and the payoff date will be January thirtieth of two thousand fifteen. A resolution can be provided for signature.
And we approve a tax anticipation note.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, questions? If you're done, all in favor of the tax anticipation note, say aye.
Aye.
All those points inside, very enough.
I, I did item number sixteen, policy forty thirty-four for board member expenses. Um, a committee of three board of education members meant to revise policy forty thirty-four for board member expenses and seeking a fair and equitable distribution of assigned services and equipment. The policy is brought to you tonight before our first reading, and we will vote on it next month. If there's any changes, anything that you would like, uh, to see differently, if you could please contact the president. And, uh, the committee can meet again if we need to.
I think some, I think some of this should probably be discussed. I know I've got this Saturday, I believe, and, um, I've been questioning, we usually install a policy or change a policy to solve a problem. And I'm not real, I haven't come up with a good articulation of what our problem is that we're solving. And I appreciate some clarity on that.
Right. The main, uh, issue that we're trying to focus on was on using the technology. What was being given out to board members, and then actually the return of that technology. On the first one, uh, technology changes very rapidly, and, um, what we want to do is make sure that the Board of Education isn't creating undue, unnecessary requests from administration regards to what they want. For instance, we negotiate, uh, prices for iPads. But in the past, we had board members who didn't want iPads, they wanted a different piece of technology, which to the turn is at a higher cost. So what this policy will do is everybody will receive the same level of technology. So if iPads is what's currently available, that's what the board members will receive. So individual board members cannot make an individual request of what kind of technology you want.
It also helps police ourselves, because in the past, if they would go to the superintendent and ask for a specific something, superintendent would not want to turn them down because they're a board member. This way, the president or the entire board will decide what the, uh, equipment or what, uh, they are allowed to have.
So that's what drove the first part. The second one was actually the return of the technology. It was brought to my attention, um, a couple of years ago, that, um, sometimes the administration is at, it's passed to have to, uh, encourage past board members to return technology to them. Where they're calling, where they're sending letters, where they're actually going to their houses. Um, and what I'm, what I wanted to see was to take that responsibility away from them as much as possible, and make it very clear for size, uh, board policy of how, um, we're supposed to handle the return of that technology.
On that point, the policy says that we will pursue legal action. And my question on that is our law firm charges over two hundred dollars an hour. If we pursue legal action, we could easily spend eight hundred, a thousand dollars to take back the two hundred dollars back. That doesn't make sense.
Actually, we would probably recoup that from the board member.
Recoup the legal expenses?
Yes.
Good luck. I mean, I've been saying, the problem is, we're getting into a situation where we are assuming board members will not do what they're asked.
Oh, because of past precedents, yes.
I understand that. But my problem is, we are painting future board members with a brush that you picked up from some experience with past board members. And my concern about that, it is not a way to build trust and, and cooperation on the board. And I'm very concerned about that point of it. I find it difficult to deal with a situation where we have to look at legal restraints. The other part of that, uh, technology part that you did not mention is that we want to have a cellphone for the president. Additional technology for the president that, as I understand, you don't have at this point.
We did have, uh, a few years ago. In fact, the last time I was president, they tried to give me, uh, a cellphone, and I just couldn't operate it, so I declined it. But when, uh, Les was president, there was a cellphone at that time for the president, and a lot of it was because, uh, we were in a superintendent search and he needed to be gotten ahold of readily. Also, uh, the committee's thought was that if the president had, and it was passed out from president to president, it could always be a phone number that anybody in the public could call and say, and get ahold of the president instead of calling directly to the superintendent. And so that's why the committee thought it would be a good idea, if the public had a number, that they could contact the board, uh, with immediately.
Special allow for the media requests that do come in.
My concern is, who wants to carry two cellphones?
Um, I personally don't, but I know that individuals who may become, I correspond a lot, uh, with Dr. LaRue through text messaging, as well as with fellow board members with text messaging. I know there are some board members who do not have that technology readily available to them, and if they were to ascend into?
Well, we're providing a phone to the president, not for all the board members.
I, correct, but if those individuals were to become board president, they would have that ability. Because I said, I myself, I text Dr. LaRue frequently.
Right, and then there's an easier way to solve that problem. And guarantee the president, whoever they are, gets a district cellphone.
It also provides consistency from president, president, that phone number traveled person to person, and, and the public would have it, and, and the president.
Well, from the comments that I hear, it means the public doesn't have any trouble calling us.
Right.
Well, for myself, I've received a multitude of different media requests. I personally don't have any issue with my cellphone, there are some individuals that would, and, um, and that was one of the reasons that this number would be published for the media outlets, that if they wish to contact the board president, they would be able to do so.
And then you would be stuck carrying two cellphones.
Yes, that would be a responsibility whoever would take over the board president.
That sounds like a burden that not everyone is going to want to take.
And that would be a personal choice, I guess.
No, it's not a personal choice, because if we're going to put in policy, it will be given to the president, it will be given, we either follow the policy or we don't.
All right. You can have it, but, um, Mr. Trader, I would have no intention of carrying those cellphones with me.
And how are they going to reach you?
Uh, they would be able to reach you by leaving voice messages and returning the calls at the time.
And you don't have the phone?
I would have it accessible to me, yes. I, I.
You're making a lot of extra work for yourself, it doesn't need to be there.
Well, it's a number that they could call, that from what I hear you say, it's a number they could call, and you don't have to carry that phone, but within an hour, two hours, or whatever, you will get back with them. And it's a, uh, a number that the press, the press and all of the constituents are able to reach.
Which means, I'm thinking that someone who's working a regular job like Scott that's out on the line is going to be checking the district cellphone with his own cellphone several times a day in order to get back within an hour, that sounds like a heck of a burden.
I think it's a responsibility.
I think it's a burden, because if you've got the personal cellphone which he has with him, you can tell him, you get it over with, you know? If the person wants to leave a message, you leave a message, and you get back to them later, but at least you know what's happened. If he leaves his district cellphone at home or in the truck, then he's got to use his own cellphone to contact the district cellphone to find out if there's been some messages left.
I wouldn't know how to do that.
I don't either, and that's why I'm sort of a little?
But I would know how to pick up the cellphone that I would have near me or in my possession and be able to pick it up and get the message.
But I also go for a fact that we require our administrators to a lot of times carry two cellphones. They have the district cellphone and their own personal cellphone, you did not have an issue with that. But you have an issue with board president, or?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
But you've overlooked the rest of the policy, so I'd like to hear more about the rest of the policy.
Laura, wait.
Oh, I'm asking you.
Well, do you want us to read it?
No, well, that would help, the public will know what we're talking about.
Yeah, well, we sent it to you.
I'm saying, the public will know what we're talking about. I already know what we're talking about.
Would you please be kind to read the?
I'd like to turn the conversation to you.
Yeah, would be great.
Yeah, please.
I think we should.
Dr. LaRue's going to read it for, uh, Mr. Trader.
No, the public should.
Uh, yeah.
The Board of Education comprises seven volunteer directors who are elected to serve the Ferguson-Floreson School District in no compensation. Travel. The directors of the Ferguson-Floreson School District may travel to educational conventions and seminars to enhance their knowledge of school business in the state of Missouri following the guidelines outlined in the Ferguson-Floreson School District Policy Manual for District Staff. The Ferguson-Floreson School District Board of Directors may annually attend an out-of-state convention or seminar with the approval vote of the Board of Education using travel guidelines per policy forty thirty-five. Community representation by the Board of Education. The members of the Board of Education are invited to attend many community recognitions throughout the year. Since this is a non-compensated position, the Board of Education member may attend various receptions, dinners, and community events and meetings in which the school district should be represented. A Board of Education member who is interested in attending an event to represent the district should get prior approval from the president of the Board of Education. As a gatekeeper, the president should be aware of the expense to the district, the importance of the event, and the realization of who may best represent the district. A Board of Education member who does not agree with the president's decision may go to the entire Board of Education for approval. Technology. Communications are vital to the Board of Education and administration, and are primarily accomplished through technology. In keeping with the precept that Board of Education members should not be responsible for using personal, personal finances to serve the district, the following technology guidelines apply. Board, Board of Education members may have one mobile device, an item within district's technology department's choosing. Upon, uh, upon being elected to the board, if a new Board of Education member does not have personal internet service, such services will be provided by the district. The president of the Board of Education will have a district cellphone or community access communication. This phone and number will be passed from president to president. The president of the Board of Education will be the gatekeeper for equipment and services provided to Board of Education members. A Board of Education member must request any necessary equipment, repairs, or services needed to serve the district through the Board of Education president only. The president will keep all assigned services and equipment fair and equitable among all Board of Education members as they approve services and equipment. If a Board of Education member does not agree with the decision of the Board of Education president, they may appeal any decision to the entire Board of Education. All equipment and services currently being used by Board of Education members at the date of this policy approval will be grandfathered in for current use. All Ferguson-Floreson School District equipment and services the Board of Education member has a privilege to use under this policy will be forfeited and returned within thirty days of the Board of Education member no longer being an elected official of the Ferguson-Floreson School District. If items are not returned by thirty days, after two phones and one request to have items returned, then legal actions will be pursued.
So what problem are we solving? Answer my basic question again.
Well, one of the concerns last, I think that last month, two months ago, was, uh, the fact that some, and I appreciate the audience coming up with this, is that some people that are running for, uh, election may not have internet in their home. And so that was why that was put in there, that we would provide that, because it is a, a communication system and how we communicate with each other. So that's why that was in there, and also gives specifics of how we are to act as board members.
I understand about the internet access, because when you and I started, we had a big telephone book of materials really. It now comes over the computer, I understand that part completely. But there's some logical problems in here. Who does the Board, who does the president of the board ask to get his computer services fixed?
Amen. He can ask the entire board.
We have to meet? We have to meet because Dr. Jidali on a five-minute phone call can fix Rob's phone, or can fix Rob's computer problem? But we have to meet as a board to decide if it's okay for him to call Dr. Jidali?
How would you, would you not trust your president? But we have had problems with people calling Dr. Jidali and asking for lots of services to be put in their home and to be used. So we were just trying to narrow it down and make it fair and equitable for everybody. I, i- if you would like to help, just write something differently, you know?
You'll get a copy in a few minutes.
Okay.
You still haven't asked about, answered about the first two parts. Diners and travel. What problem have we solved?
Well, we have discussed at other board meetings in the past where, when we, I don't know why they have to answer all these questions.
You may answer them all, there are six other people on the board.
Well, there were three of us on the committee, Dan. Do you want to say anything while we keep?
On the community representation at the Board of Education, that came up due to budget constraints, and we were getting multiple requests for sponsorships of different events throughout the St. Louis metropolitan area. So we're trying to find a way to streamline that to, um, limit the financial impact that it has on the district, but still allow us the ability to attend the functions at will. So what we've wanted to do is make sure that if there was a dinner that you wanted?
Your policy doesn't allow attending at will. Your policy allows a board member to ask permission from the president. That's not the ability to attend at will.
I still think there should be some level of accountability, and as the board president, whoever sits in this chair should be the ultimate gatekeeper. So that way, if you come up, Mr. Trader, and say, I wanted to attend a dinner in Nashville, Tennessee, for a NAP conference, if we leave in there at will, then any board member could decide at any given time what they wish to do in the community. And I don't think that should be the case. So I personally don't have a problem with whoever sits in the chair for them to be a formal request, just like when we turn in travel reimbursements. Before those checks are supposed to be issued back to board members, the board president is still supposed to sign off on those.
That's correct, and that's already in our policy.
And now we're kind of cleaning it up.
Well, you're adding, you're not cleaning.
I, I call it cleaning.
My concern is, you mentioned, it's a budget problem. Is that the problem with travel also?
Travel to Nashville, Tennessee?
It's in this, it's in the policy. I also talked about dinners and travel, you spoke almost only about technology. You avoided the dinners and the travel.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't.
It looks like quite a bit there, Matt.
I know there's a lot here, but you haven't talked about it.
Well, we can talk about it, you don't have to.
Start talking.
Well, just ask a question.
I did.
And your question, you did, was?
My question is, is this a problem of budget? Is that what we're trying to solve, is a budget problem?
I think it's, it's, I think seven individuals?
I think it's, it's, I think seven individuals here might have different opinions with it. To me, it is a budgetary issue, absolutely. I really don't see the purpose of the school district at a time when we're struggling to pay for sponsorships, to pay for tables, when we don't even have people who are willing or able to attend. So then we're having to reach out to anybody and everybody to go to them. So that is something that's been a problem. You know, I said earlier last time today, I told you, Mr. Trader, you know, as much as I like to be involved with the community, I don't need to go to all the dinners. And if it's a teacher being recognized, I'd rather give my ticket to their spouse, or to their mother, or to their child to go to the dinner versus me going, because I'm sure that teacher would appreciate that fact more than me. So, but we don't ever do that. It's always just the board members go. Why can't it be the principal?
The principal usually does go.
What's that?
The principal usually does go.
Um, I've been to enough functions and they have not. It's us. And for me personally, I've always had an issue with that.
Well, the interesting thing about this is the board operations has a budget. Does anybody know what it is?
That was thirty, do you remember the number? It was thirty thousand?
See, my, my problem on this is if it's a budget problem and we're running out of money, we don't go and we cut things back. Well, that's what we've been doing already. We haven't had to do all this nonsense that's in this policy to do that.
But just because you have money and a budget does not mean that you have to spend it.
I agree with that.
Don't spend it to the...
Well, Rob's sounding like he's worried about spending too much money. That was my pickup. That we're spending too much money. Now, I would give a specific example of how board members do a very good job of policing this themselves. Three years ago, the St. Louis American Dinner, I believe all six or seven, see, there were six or seven board members all went to that. And at that time, I believe we had a principal and teacher being recognized. The next year, our superintendent and the teacher was recognized, but only one board member went because the feeling that there was too much money being spent. And this year, a teacher was recognized and one board member went, the other board members did not. In other words, people made the choice of how to save money. Didn't need this policy, didn't need this micromanaging. And I think that's a dangerous thing that we're going down to, is the micromanaging.
That's your opinion?
I know that's my opinion, but the problem is, when we set our budget, which will be coming up in June, we know how much money we have, except nobody knows to remember it. We know how much money we can spend for conferences and travel. We make that decision when we set the budget of how many people are going to go. But the next budget item, that's Biden on this agenda, is who's going to go to the national conference? Who should know that already? We set the budget last June. The answer is, nobody knows. Because we don't look at our own budget.
The budget doesn't say how much that we can spend on conferences.
It certainly does.
It, it says, this is how much the board has to spend.
On conferences and training. That's what it says. You're worried about dinners, other expenses, it's listed. You're worried about internet services, it's listed. All you have to do is look at it. Laura's got it at her fingertips. All you have to do is ask. And the problem with the President being a good gatekeeper, which I find incredibly insulting, I'll give another example of past Presidents. Present President, not mentioning, and I will not mention any names. They're dealing with national conferences. Three years ago, Scott and I were up for election. Where our guidelines say the people up for election, if it's contested, are not eligible to attend the conference on the district's dime. That year, the national conference was held at the end of April after the election. We were elected. Two board members went to that conference on the district's dime. I went to the conference on my own nickel, although it was a little more than a nickel. Because I thought it was important. The new board president said, "Well, I asked the board to pay your registration, but they wouldn't buy it." Our policy specifically says no district money should have been spent. That should not have been offered. That board president made a mistake of judgment. The next year, the board president, unilaterally, without consulting the whole board, decided how many people were going to attend the national conference. Turned out, a board member who wanted to attend, which was not me, by the way, was not able to go because the reservations had not been made. Last year, the board president decided without talking to the whole board, nobody was going to go to the conference. And you referenced Policy 4035. That policy specifically says school board members are intended, are encouraged to attend the National School Boards Association National Conference if possible. Nothing in this policy changes that statement, but this policy certainly contradicts that statement.
Well, we were cutting eight million dollars out of the budget that year. It seemed ludicrous to send us going anyplace.
I think we should have talked about it. It is not the President's prerogative to do that. The President is not in a position of power.
Um, Mr. President, I think we are off the subject of this policy.
I agree.
I would like for us to, to get back on the subject of the policy. Paul, if you have another policy that you are recommending?
If we pass these down? And by the way, and by the way, just as a matter of point, these papers I'm handing out, including my hand review, are printed on my own paper, my own ink, my own printer, my own computer. No district money spent.
This was the first reading?
Yes.
So we will look at this one and bring it back. Is that a...
Yeah, we could either bring this one back as written or a formal vote in January. If we made modifications to it, then we would bring it back next month for the first reading again.
I think you'll find mine is a little simpler.
If I'm one there, I guess I'm not. All I like to say is, um, what I did like about it, um, was keeping it in, within the board, because I think, um, this, there starts to be a conflict of interest when you have to go to the superintendent or even appearance of conflict of interest. And, um, you know, I do like that everything comes back to the board and is maintained within the board, instead of, um, you know, let's face it, we never... You know, the old adage is, nobody ever gives you money without, without expectations of some kind. And I know I'm guilty of that too, you know? I had a, I had incidences in my life where you think you're donating, and now I'm sitting back in my chair going, "What are they doing with that money?" But anyway, my point being, it's, it's kind of maintained here, so there, there's a definite break between the superintendent and the board as far as, uh, what could be even a perceived conflict of interest. So that's just my thought. I did like that about the policy.
Thank you.
I think it goes again? In the item number seventeen, National School Board Association delegates. Board of Education will vote to approve a delegation of members to attend the NSBA Conference, which will be held on March twenty-first through twenty-third, twenty-fifteen in Nashville, Tennessee. Registration fee is seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per member in addition to hotel and travel expenses. So I guess since I'm doing this one, is anybody interested in going?
I'd like to go. I haven't been to any national conferences in four years. I don't know.
And Donna would like to go?
Hey, Donna, because I did send a request out, a query, who would like to attend, and Paul and Donna were the two that did indicate that, so.
So I move that we send Paul and Donna to the National School Board Convention.
Second?
A motion to debate and second for Mr. Morris and Dr. Thurman to attend the NSBA Conference in Nashville, Tennessee. All in favor?
Renate, hello, hello, hello.
Conversation, sorry.
Thank you. My concern on this is, it says seven hundred and fifty dollars. What are we really going to spend?
The registration fee is seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I know, so what are we really going to spend? This is a blank check that we're issued here.
Do we know what the hotel cost would be at this time?
Board doesn't know.
Per... Okay, and that's per, uh, per board member? Okay.
And that's also correct, by the way. Not only is Marty right, of course, he always is, but I checked it out. Yes, that's exactly correct. And if you want to save money, since we're worried about saving money, you might consider, especially people that are working people, that taking a day of vacation to attend the Monday part of the conference is a burden. You have to use a vacation day if they're going to stay for that Monday. And I have done this in the past at national conferences, is not stay for Monday. Your plane ticket is a little bit more expensive, but you save the hotel, which means you save hotel and meals for one day. Your plane ticket is normally not that much more expensive. So you actually save money if you just do the Saturday and Sunday. Particularly going to Nashville, you can fly out late Friday night, be there Saturday morning, and fly out late Sunday night to come back. And you save a day in the motel, in the hotel, you save seven meals, and the net district gains about seventy-five bucks out of that. Now, that's not always a wise choice, but if you're really worried about saving money, that's one way to do it, and I've done that in the past. When we went to San Francisco, I did not stay for Monday.
You can also drive down, which is even...
No, no. Fifty-nine cents a mile? Not a chance.
Well, my, we get thirty-five cents where I work, so...
I'm talking about what our policy offers, okay?
I know, I know what you're saying. You can do that. We've also, I would like to leave it up to the people going, whether they stay for Monday, because there might be a, a class or a session they want to be on date.
Exactly, I agree.
One year, when we went to Chicago, we, Joy presented, and we were all there on Monday. So I don't think that's our decision.
Oh, I agree with that, but I'm just giving ideas. Because I'm thinking of Scott as a working man, and maybe doesn't want to give up a vacation day. And because of that, he thinks, "Oh, if I have to go, I have to give up a vacation day. I think I'll just sit back and not go." And the other concern about this is since our guidelines are still in effect, we made this decision, but we didn't know if Scott or I are going to be eligible to attend. If it's an uncontested election, we would be eligible to attend. And we're making this decision before we even know that. We won't know that until January the twentieth, possibly. Just a point of logic.
This conference is prior to the election, so...
That's correct. Which means if it be an uncontested election, we would be, if we filed, we would be automatically elected. And at the February meeting, we would be board members, and we would be eligible to attend.
It is an uncontested election, pretty soon.
Uh, but it has happened in the past, and since we've talked about we're making choices because of what's happened in the past.
And it has happened in the past that, that board members that were going to the conference were not elected.
And that's why we changed the guidelines.
That's correct.
And I agree with you completely on that, Mr. Morris.
All right, your motion, oh, words, we need to...
But just to, just to let you know, uh, it's not our policy, but it is a policy at St. Louis Community College, that if you drive, you can drive and turn your mileage up to the cost of the airplane ticket.
That's fine.
And I will be happy to do that.
No, I'm not worried about that, because we've done, we've done, if we save money, when we went to the national, we all took the train because it was cheaper than either driving, just the gasoline in car, plus parking and thirty dollars a day to park your car when you got there. It was infinitely cheaper to take the train, and we all took the train, and it worked out perfect. So board members know how to save money. You don't have to put it in the policy and micromanage what happens if you want to save money. And your word of gatekeeper is obnoxious.
Um, Mr. Reber?
As someone who's constantly in meetings with Laura Medrusik, go for money and try and squeeze every penny for our kids. You know, and the teachers took a pay freeze and everything like that that, that year. I'm, I'm neutral here. I, I've never been to a conference. Can anybody who's been to a conference, uh, give me some pointers on, on the bank or the buck for, uh, for, for this conference? I mean, I've been to the local conference down in, at the Lake of the Ozarks, which I, I do find, uh, quite beneficial, because it's districts in our state and have Desi there, and, and, you know, all the people, the, the things kind of apply right here. They, they have great ideas and things down there also. I'm not, like I said, I, I'd just like to know the, what's the big benefit for this?
I don't, for me, when I went, it was more of a national perspective on education. Um, you know, I love going to MSBA, it's the most important conference. I encourage everybody to attend that. I encourage administrators to go to it. Um, but on the national level of it, it's, it's interesting to find out what they're doing in Massachusetts, what they're doing in Idaho, how they're trying to solve problems. Because it, it's amazing, even in our school district, the problems that we're facing are very similar across the nation. Um, and so you are getting a little bit, a different perspective on how they're addressing those challenges. That's why I really enjoy the MSBA conference.
Paul, any question?
All right. Um, all in favor of sending Dr. Thurman and Paul Morris to the national conference? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
Aye.
Um, Mr. Reber? Um, majority ayes, we'll be going to the conference. All right. Um, motion to adjourn to executive session?
Sound off.
Sound off, fast.
Uh, drug second, move to a...
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Reber.
Aye.
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 And, um... Aye.